Good evening, welcome to the Westenica Board of Education Work Session. Tonight, we are going to have some presentations by some of our directors and assistant superintendents. So, we'll start with the pledge. Mrs. Delbo, would you lead us in the pledge?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
And again, this meeting is a virtual meeting because we're practicing social distancing. We wore our masks when we came in, but now that we're at least six feet apart, we don't need our masks. So, can I have, Mr. Bystrek, was there something you wanted to say about the meetings?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for tuning in tonight, and thanks, everyone, for being here. Just a couple of quick items of notes. We are doing virtual parent forums tomorrow night, and then Wednesday night from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Please continue to use the email address that we have on our website to email in questions. We've already gotten a number of great questions, which I'll be addressing tomorrow night. Similar formats. We'll have someone reading off the questions live to me, and I'll be answering them, but I also have a number of questions already that I plan to address tomorrow night at those meetings. So, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. tomorrow night. You can access directly through the homepage of our website. There'll be a link.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, for 2A and a new business, last, when we had our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, we had approved tax rates, but they were the wrong tax rates. They were the tax rates from last year. So, we have a revised tax rate on there. So, can I have a motion to approve those tax rates?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Kretowski, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Seabird, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried seven to zero. Okay, we also have some presentations. So, our Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Operations, Dr. Savoni, would you please come up? And we had posed some information that we wanted, and so we would like you to give us some updates as to what's going on in the district.
Yeah. I don't know if this is working, so thank you so much. I was told you didn't want a big PowerPoint.
Yeah, you don't need your mask unless you want to, but...
Nope, that's fine. I was told you didn't want any big presentation or anything. I just have a 40 slides that I'd like to go through quickly.
And after we wake up, then we... No, no.
It would have been 60, but he cut it down.
So, I know I posed a few questions to you. I'll try to go ahead and answer those, and then if you have any follow-up questions. So, I think the first one was, what is my role in the district? And, you know, my title is, you know, I don't know if it makes sense to a lot of people, Administrative Operations. And, you know, really, I'm a member of a larger team that is here to try to lead and guide the district, you know, with the goal of focusing on students. So, you know, I think if you look up my formal job description somewhere, you know, a huge piece of what I do is responsibility for employee and labor functions and relationships, as it relates to everything from recruitment, employment, expectations, labor relations. And a big part of my job is working with key stakeholder groups in our organization to support our employees, to answer questions, to, you know, deal with conflicts and work through resolutions. You know, kind of my vision for the position is, you know, our biggest resource is our human resource in this industry. So, I want to have the best people in the best places to be able to support our students, and whether that is a teacher, a teacher aide, a bus driver, a part-time cleaner, transportation, a bus attendant, et cetera. It's my job to have the right person in there, make sure they understand the expectations and the vision and mission of our district, and, you know, certainly to make sure that they're held accountable for that, but also that they're given the resources they need to be successful in that position. So, you know, much of my day is working collaboratively with our building administrators, our central office team, a lot of our union leadership, and it probably isn't a day go by where I'm not on the phone with each one of those stakeholder groups or meeting in person and just talking through, you know, in this community of our school system of, you know, north of 6,500 students and over 1,000 employees. You can imagine, there's always something going on with regards to labor relations and human resources. Another big piece in my job is all those administrative functions in the district that aren't always on the forefront of a teacher in a classroom, like our transportation, our food service, our technology department. I work very closely with our finance department and making sure, you know, our offices are so interconnected, because much of what we do in human resources and its administrative function of all those components tie into, you know, our budget and what we're, you know, how our resources are allocated. So, it is fascinating, exhilarating, and I love the work. And I think I'm fortunate that I've been able to be in the district now for over a decade and be able to have a lot of experiences working in different capacities and understanding some of the nuances and the uniqueness of Westenica and our community. And I think that that bodes well for, you know, whenever you're coming into a tough situation, you need to resolve a problem. So, questions on that? Well, my accomplishments this past year, I think, you know, there's a lot we do every day for the betterment of kids. You know, certainly some things that stand out is we were able to work collectively and resolve some of our collective bargaining agreements. That's a huge accomplishment, and be able to do that in a collaborative nature. You know, certainly managing the onset of a pandemic has been interesting. One thing I'm certainly proud of is we've partnered with some local colleges recently with regards to promoting this connection and getting people back into the profession of education. And if you're familiar with it, you know, subs are at a premium in all positions. And we've been able to work with Canisius, Buffalo State, Niagara, and develop this partnership, really developing future teachers is one of them, where we actually have graduate and undergraduate students coming into our buildings, getting an experience, in some cases, subbing for us, being mentored by our teachers. So, it's an incredible thing, and it's grown throughout the course of the year, and we're continuing it even into our fall, and giving, really, college students an opportunity to experience what it's like to work in public education. So, that's certainly something that I'm proud of. You know, how is my job different this next school year from any other normal year? Well, I wish I knew, or how will my job be different? I don't know if I know that yet, but, you know, there is the challenges that we're going to deal with with our staff, and the social, emotional, you know, challenges that they've had personally is going to affect our organization. So, we need to be sensitive to that at the forefront and deal with them as human beings. And then, because they have to stand or be in front and engaging with our students in our community. So, we need to make sure that they have the proper supports in place, and that's going to be something that we're going to have to manage and be mindful of. With what this fall is going to look like here and everywhere else, we're going to be managing childcare issues. We're going to be managing new methods of teaching and learning and assessing and evaluating. And, you know, how can I ensure that the right people are in the right place and that our administrators, our teachers, our support staff are supported? And, you know, when they ask the question, how can I find the answer? You know, what leaves are potentially available? What type of supports are out there for people, for their families? What happens if someone gets sick? All those types of questions is something that we're adjusting to, you know, under these current circumstances. What obstacles is, you know, it's a pretty powerful question, do I have in my role? And I think, you know, everyone wants to come to you with what they want, right? What they need. And how do you manage wants and needs with maintaining a level of fiscal conservativeness mindset and being able to come to this governing group, come to my superintendent, and be able to advocate for or against some desires that exist? You know, I would always encourage someone to ask for what they want, you know, because if you don't ask, you know, I won't know. But it's that vetting process and trying to determine where there may be a variety of good ideas, but we have to be respectful to the community, to the taxpayer, and how can, you know, how can we make a decision that we're going to get the best value and the most impact for our students? And again, I think it's just drawing it back to the students. And I was a teacher, I was assistant principal, I was a principal, so like, my life has been geared around students. I'm a parent, so, you know, I think that is kind of at the forefront when you're trying to make a decision on something or make a recommendation to the board. You know, that's what I want to be able to stand behind. Here is why I believe we need this position, or add this program, or consider this partnership. And, you know, what are within our bounds and within our goals and parameters set forth by you, and certainly set forth by Mr. Bystrek and his, you know, and his vision for the district? What do I need, you know, from our board or from our district? You know, I think what I need is what I've been given, support, you know, transparency, that if there's, you know, if there's a need in the community, or if there's a concern that's being brought either to you as community representatives of the district, or to those that I support or supervise, or if that supervises me, just that open communication, that here is what we're hearing. Here is, you know, here is what maybe people believe could have been done differently, or done better, or changed. And, you know, we need to be reflective in our roles. They're huge jobs. And, you know, so I think, I would just, I always want someone to be honest with me and just tell me, hey, here's where I think maybe something could have changed or improved, and I need to be self-reflective in doing that. So, I would just say, continue to do that, and continue to have confidence in my commitment to doing what's best for the district. And, you know, it's a huge commitment, these jobs, and they're extremely fulfilling, and we're fortunate to be doing them, and I don't take it for granted. How is distant learning or remote learning going to impact my job this coming school year? Well, I'm a father of three boys, so that's going to be interesting. They're entering fourth grade, and seventh grade, and ninth grade. I'm not quite sure yet. You know, from a professional standpoint, it's going to be adjusting, I think, to the oversight and to the management of supporting our staff, and how these nuances and these things that we maybe would have never expected to have to be facing in our profession, how do I now adjust to that in my role? From dealing with how their contract is interpreted in this unique setting, to, you know, we basically just went one-to-one, you know, in no time. And how do we now have to adjust our plans? We certainly had a vision for that, but it's been accelerated. So, how do we, how do I build those supports now around our IT department, our tech department, from top down to try to adjust to that? So, that's a big piece. And, you know, everything that we do in my role is interconnected with our educational operations, our special ed, our PPS, our superintendent, our board, so our principals, our assistant principals, our unions. So, there is constant communication needed, and considering different perspectives of how, you know, I may have this great idea, but how is it going to affect this group, or this agreement, or this understanding of how our district operates? So, it's a lot. You know, this past spring, you know, what have I done differently? That's something I didn't see there. I'm sorry, I skipped that. You know, I don't know if I've done anything differently. It's certainly, you know, adjusting personally to some changes in society, but it's been busy. It's been trying to have something, you know, a snow day comes on you, and you think it's for a day, but all of a sudden, it's two months, three months, four months, and you're wondering, you know, how do we adjust to this? So, it's just been trying to be patient, and trying to just, you know, use what you believe in to try to make good decisions, and just listen to people, and try to make the best decision you can. And so, it's been really, as I said, fascinating and exhilarating time, and my head's spinning, but it's good work, and I'm happy to be the one doing it. And so, I think that's kind of a nutshell of kind of, you know, what I think, you know, is important about what I have to do here and what I kind of believe in. But I'm happy to answer any questions or expand upon anything. I don't know if that got at what you were looking for or not?
Yeah, yeah, we're just, we're going to have all the directors and assistant superintendents, everybody come into our meetings, just so that we get a better grasp on what everybody does in the district.
Yeah, it's a great idea. And even though you're being a new board member, like, you may not know exactly, depending on where you're into what a school system does, as a parent, okay, you know, you're a teacher, you're a principal, whatever, but you still know what goes on at the district office, so to say. So, I support it. I think it's a great idea, and I'm happy to, you know, update or give you any information you need at any time.
Anybody have any particular questions to ask Dr. Savoni? Okay, well, thank you very much for your candor and letting us know what you do. Okay, our athletic director, Marissa Felicaro Doherty, if you come up, she's going to have an interesting year this year. So, we'll see what she has planned.
Hi. So, I thought this was more going to be a sit-down kind of work session, so I wasn't quite sure what exactly information you were looking for besides the questions. So, I'll just do like Dr. Savoni did and kind of go through the questions, and you can stop me at any time.
And any information that you want to give us that will give us a better understanding of, you know, like I said, particularly how we can help you do what you do for the district?
Okay, perfect. So, first off, my job description is, I am Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletics for the district. So, I oversee, educate, and empower the physical education teachers and the health teachers. There's roughly 30 in the district, K-12, and then the coaches as well. We have 154 paid coaches on staff, and then roughly about 40 extra volunteers, K-12. So, my job is to weed through all the stuff that I can find as far as new rules, new regulations, which are constantly changing, not only for PE and health, but for athletics, NFHS, and NCAA. They are changing rules all the time, and I don't, there's no way coaches can keep up with that. So, my job is to basically pay attention to those, research them, make sure the coaches know about the rule changes, and then how I can help them achieve those rule changes. I have the luxury of being the girls' rep for Section 6, so I get to sit on the New York State Committee. There's only 40 of us across the state, I believe. There's 11 sections. So, I am up to date on all the new rules and regulations. But my job is to make sure that I'm communicating with the coaches and the teachers as far as how they can do their job, what they need from me to help them do their job, especially in the special areas where it is just, it's kids in, 40 minutes later, you've got another group of kids, and you're teaching a wide variety of age groups. So, my job is to help them succeed, find out what they need to succeed, and also to find out, to kind of be the mediator or the in-between for the community and the district as far as athletics and just healthy living K-12. Find out exactly what the community needs are and how I can help them. You know, I've enjoyed working with Stephanie Wright. I think I'm going to get to work with her a lot more once buildings are back open and we can run some programs, but to basically see what we can do that way. Accomplishments for last year, that's an interesting question, because I started November 12, and a lot of the stuff was already in place before me, so I can't take much credit for that, because Mr. Grazeck and Mr. Dello so did a great job with that. But I would say one of the big accomplishments for Westenica was the introduction of unified bowling. If anybody had a chance to come out and see it, it was the first year for it. It was extremely successful. Lauren Clark did a great job. We were looking forward to a great basketball season, and we actually had a great assembly planned for it, which was going to qualify us for a national award. So, Lauren and I had to put that on hold for right now. But I was extremely proud of the success of that. We also had a very successful winter season. We had a number of individual athletes qualify for state championships. Bowling and indoor track were extremely successful, and they unfortunately saw their season end. But I was able to present them with individual state medals, so that was nice. They still did receive a state medal for that. I delivered one girls to Target. She was working at Target, so I presented it to her at Target. You know, personally, I was able to work with Tracy Spagnola and our school doctor to work out some of the kinks and confusions around the concussion policy and athletic training. So, I think we have a good policy in place right now, and we're working with our new, soon-to-be, once everything straightens out, board-approved athletic training service. The PE-wise, the elementary held a wonderful three-on-three basketball tournament, so I learned a little bit about the history of the basketball tournament, the Gary Geiser Run, and stuff that we can build on in the elementary schools. And then, like I said, I was reappointed, personal goal, I was reappointed as the girls' rep for Section 6 with NISFA, so they'd have me for another four years. And then, I also was appointed as the head of a compensation, the compensation committee for New York State, which I don't know if that's good or bad. From March 19th to the present, what have I done differently? A lot. One, I've been able to spend more time with the PE curriculum. It really, COVID did give me a chance to dive in to exactly what happens in Westenica, Eastside, Westside, K through 12. It gave me a chance to really look at phys ed and health in this district, see some of the highlights, see some of the needs, and where I can help out in that area. Normally, in the world of athletic director, it's very hard to try to squeeze in in-between-seasons curriculum parts, so it did give me a chance to do that. I also spent, I spent a lot of time coming up with game plan A, B, C, as everybody else did, and I think I'm on game plan X right now of whereabouts we are. Thank God for Mary Kay Biddle in my office, because she's amazing with getting the schedules ready and then canceling them. And it's definitely been interesting. If, you know, typically, two years ago, this would have been the start of the fall season. It would have been crazy if you would have asked me to be at a board meeting. I would have been like, are you crazy? You're running around football, we're doing all this. And now, I think we're on plan X and trying to figure out what to do right now. How will my job be different this school year? It's definitely different, but it's still the same kind of juggle. As of right now, the update is, the governor is still not allowing any extracurricular activities. He did finally open gymnasiums, or, excuse me, fitness centers in the community, but he still did not give any indication as to when schools could start activities. So, we are still on hold. I have talked to, I was just talking to coach, football coach today, who's meeting virtually with his kids once a week, and the coaches have been great. They're clamoring, they're trying to, they want to do whatever. So, I think while it will be different as far as no games, I think the hustle and bustle is, as soon as we are given the go-ahead from the governor, I know I will be calling Mr. Bystrek saying, what can I do for school? Because we will have coaches that want to get out and work with kids. I know, I talked to Stephanie Wright in the parking lot. She's calling local businesses. I'm calling local businesses as far as what, as soon as the governor gives the okay, what can we do for kids to get them active? So, it will be the same. It will be trying to create programs. That's usually what I like to do. I know that any success in high school athletics, it stems from the beginning. So, if I can create some programs for the elementary kids, whether it's on campus or off-campus, that's what I'm going to be looking to do within the next couple of months. PE-wise, it will definitely be different. I, we have an upcoming meeting for PE and health on Monday, so that we can talk about remote learning. The one thing I think that, you know, I try to find positive in a lot of situations, and I think that the positive that came out of COVID is that we have some teachers that are, and just myself included, that are looking for new ways to help kids, and new ways to teach kids, and help them get through this. And they're finding different ways to use remote learning now that some of them may have never tried before, where now we have to. So, we're finding different ways that you can actually run a PE class while doing live streaming. So, that's how it will be different. Obstacles in my job, I think you get used to it when you're in athletics. It's a balancing act. It looks like organized chaos, or it looks like chaos, but it's pretty organized. So, we're kind of used to that. If anything, I would love building access, at least one gym, and trying to build programs. Sometimes, we're tied into hours that it may be staffed, so like, on a weekend or something. I think, you know, if you were to ever ask me a wish list, that would be one of them. Just give me one gym in the district that I could use on a Saturday or something to run programs through and not cost the district any extra money. That would be great. That's a wish list item, and don't quote me on contract. Wish list item, don't quote me on contract, but that's usually, you know, I can, I can do some pretty neat programs on a Saturday, and the coaches are willing to do that for our younger kids. So, that's one of the obstacles. Other than that, I'm loving Westenica. What do you need from the district or the board to perform your job more effectively and efficiently? That's basically it. And I know Mr. Savoni said about transparency, and if there's something, whether it's PE or athletics, that you have a question about. Again, I had a bunch of things, because I wasn't sure which direction it was going. So, I've got numbers, I've got money, I've got, well, I don't have money, but I have the documentation. I have the documentation for costs on different things. But I'm, you know, if you just ask me, I can definitely get you information on it. And the last one, how will distance or remote learning impact your job for this year? It's definitely changed it, but I think, again, it's doable. The staff has been wonderful, and we had a meeting two weeks ago, and they're just excited to get back, whether, you know, it's not really in front of the kids, but they're excited, and they just want to get back, see the kids, because they know the kids need it. That was the big thing. That's all I have.
Now, you said you had a lot of statistics, like what kind of statistics?
So, I have a breakdown of teams, the amount of teams for each side of town, the amount of coaches, participation, expenses for each side of town. I do have one of those, if everybody wants one.
That would be wonderful.
That would be great, yeah. Oh, yeah.
That's, so that's an overview. It's not broken out by team. I do have one broken out by team. You'd have to make a photocopy of it, but I could definitely pass it around if you wanted to see it.
Does that cost by sports, too?
It's cost by sport. It's cost by, it tells you roster size, the coaching stipend, which is contractual. It tells you officials. It's the projected one for the upcoming season, entry fees, supplies, and transportation. Thank you. Okay, I can definitely pass it around, and then if anybody wants to make copies of it, they can.
Ma'am, can you get someone to make a copy for us?
Or she could just email it to us.
Yeah, if you can just email, yeah.
Could you just email it to us?
Yeah, if you just email, that'd be great.
So, just so you know, it's broken out by East Senior, West Senior, and then district teams. And then, like I said, some of the, some of the items are contractual, but it does show you the roster size. It shows you how many coaches, which again, is contractual. The officials are the projection, if we were to run a regular fall, winter, and spring. So, I can send that to you.
Yeah, if you could just email that to us, that would be great. That would be wonderful.
Can I, one of the subjects, or one of the areas that we tabled that might be on there, can we just take a visual to see? The one thing that was, that we were supposed, okay, is that on there?
Um, I know what you're talking about. It's, no, it's the rental.
Yes, I was just curious. I mean, yeah, no problem. It'll just make a difference, because I'm sure people wanted to see that.
It's, so it's under rental right here. So, that's for the Eastside of town, and then that's for the Westside of town. You should pass that.
Yes, thank you.
Would you mind just making, John, a couple of copies?
Yeah, you want to do that? Would that be helpful?
She can email it, too, but, you know.
Yeah, just so we have it for discussion. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. My other quick question, I wanted to ask, what do you envision, or did you have a conversation with your phys ed, how they're seeing, once schools slowly starts opening up, what's their vision to get in? Are they going into a classroom? Are they trying to take kids to put them in a gymnasium?
So, we had initially talked a couple of weeks ago, the PE staff and health, about what it would look like. And we were going with basically what the, what the district was saying, because at this time right now, what the guidelines are is, and again, it depends which guidelines you go with. They say it's 12 feet if you're doing heavy breathing exercises. They say six feet if you're not doing them, which, and I did have They say six feet if you're not doing them, which, and I did have the breakdown, which I didn't bring, per gymnasium, but you're still, you're looking at roughly an elementary gym of about 16 to 20 kids in an elementary gym. That's six feet apart. That's not 12. In a high school gym, you are looking at 20, again, six feet to 12, or six feet apart. What we looked at, we were looking at swimming pools. Again, that would be up to the district. I could safely get us half of a class into a swimming pool. I could, I worked with East Middle. They were able to find me an extra classroom. So, we were going to create almost, I call it a wee room, but it's basically, you take a smartboard, you have the smartboard in front of you, can do a lot of activities with a smaller class right there. Our vision is, we just want to be in front of kids. So, if you told me, Marissa, the only way that you could have your kids is to push into an elementary classroom, then we would do it. Obviously, we want to try to get back into the gymnasium, even if it comes down to, if they had the class on Monday, they would have the gymnasium, and maybe the next cycle that went through their Wednesday class, the other half had that class. And then half the class would be either in the classroom, auditorium, library, whatever room you could find us. One of the nice things that, again, COVID has presented us with is getting back to not just the physical well-being of athletes, but, excuse me, of students, but also the mental part. Mental health is huge, and it really does fall under PE and health. So, that's part, I worked with Tracy Spagnola while we thought we were still coming in hybrid. We worked on some yoga materials. We worked on some self-wellness materials that we could use. So, the thought was, while maybe if they were meeting three times a week, one time a week was actually in the gym with one group, the other part could be on more of the mental standpoint, what you could do. We also, I mean, we're getting creative here, especially, we were looking, we were looking at parking lots. If there's no visitors, mark off a spot in the parking lot. There's activities that we could do. There's also, like I said, if you have a smartboard in a classroom, there's a lot of activities. So, we just want to get back in front of the kids. We are happy to do, I've met with almost all the principals, and we have our expectations already set for elementary, middle school, and high school. We know exactly what we're doing remote-wise. And then what we'll end up discussing is how we phase that back in, that approach.
Okay, my other question is, is there, any talk statewide, like, I know there's a mandated amount of time for phys ed, okay? They talked about because of the situation, and if it is hybrid, allowing us to cut down on the time for phys ed, because obviously the students are only there, and then do some remote at home.
So, I did call after SED had their press conference, and they said that the PE mandates would be flexible.
Good, okay.
But they did not tell us what.
Okay.
They did not say if it was because your K through three is still supposed to be every day. They did not say if it was going to be, you know, even not, not every day, but not the 120 minutes. They said flexible, but they won't define flexible at this point.
So, it could be like a walk-around school building.
They had, all they kept saying, they used the word flexible, but they wouldn't put it in writing. And I even did try to get them to put it in writing, and they called me. I don't think at this point, especially that they have not really announced as far as school-related activities, for instance, sports. I don't think we're going to get something in writing, and today's press conference said that they would open the fitness centers if masks were being worn. I noticed that he put that in there, too.
Thirty-three percent or something?
Thirty-three percent with masks being worn. So, I'm thinking they're still a little leery on actually saying what exactly a PE space would look like.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question for you, too, Melissa, if you could. Looking at the teams, we have a total of 99 teams.
Correct.
Okay. We're showing 20, 20 at East and West. What is the seven for the district?
Those are the district combined teams. So, that would be in the fall, we have field hockey varsity, field hockey JV, field hockey modified, there's a boys soccer.
So, them, are them combined?
The combined teams.
Yes, they're combined. They're district teams.
Okay.
I'm drawing a blank. There's, it's not tennis. Um, not in that, not in the fall. Hold on, I have it on my other sheet. Here we go. It's, oh, cross-country modified and golf. There we go. One, two, three, four, five, nine, five. I'm missing one. So, those are the district, the East and West teams combined. That should be five, my apologies.
What is the East and West combined soccer team? Is it a girls?
It was supposed to be boys, I believe. I think it's missing. I thought it was JV. I haven't been here in a fall, so I'm still working on that.
You have the seven, eight, nine East team listed.
Okay, that's a misprint.
Okay.
That is a misprint.
So, we're not doing seven, eight, nine East anymore?
We are doing seven, eight, nine, but that counts as East, that doesn't count as district. District should be five. This is why I should have had Mary Kay proof it for me. Mary Kay will probably hurt me because she had the correct information, and I had the wrong.
And as we look at these, I just want to be able to find out what the numbers that were sticking out.
Yeah, that should be, that should be five.
Five for the modified?
Nope, excuse me, five for varsity.
Varsity.
Are varsity, okay.
All right, so.
Instead of a 11? Or are you on the sub seven?
Actually, correct it. That is not, it is one, uh, two. It is varsity field hockey and varsity golf.
And that's, okay, that's the teams.
That's the teams for district.
And that's what we currently combined as of this year, too, right?
We combined East and West, and we will do it again.
Okay.
Until, thank you. Until field hockey, golf has been a very good program combined. It's been very strong. Field hockey, I believe, just merged a couple of years ago due to declining numbers. My hope is still to build and then re-go back, but right now, the numbers are not supporting that, so we're staying at a combined team.
Okay, so when we go down to participation, we see 324, 36.
Yep.
District 74.
Yes.
That is?
That is the correct number.
Okay.
That is 74 kids for those district teams.
Okay. All right, and then that 122. Now, when we go down to expense parts, we have the two for the coaches. What is the 62, 851 for?
The, on the district teams? So, that's separated still by East, it's still by West, and then the district teams.
All right, so that's the cost of what we've combined of East and West?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, if you see, there is a little asterisk for.
I saw the coaches included facility.
Yep. And then also participation for the winter, where it says 122, that is because we combine with two other districts for ice hockey, so.
That was for the girls, right?
That was for girls. So, that number has some Hamburg kids in there as well as Eden kids. West Seneca, if I was to guess, it was, it would probably be around 110, our West Seneca number.
Okay.
And there are some, like I put at the bottom, additional expenses as far as athletic training, game staff, supervision, and uniforms, which.
I like to see the cycle on there. That at least explains what you're looking at every four to five years.
We took, we took a hard look, and again, I'm, I'm new, I just started here, so there's things, and I've been coaching for 20 years, so coaches and I are working through some different beliefs. But the uniform cycle, Mary Kay has kept a great spreadsheet. I think she has it dated back all the way to 1980. So, we know exactly what uniforms were purchased, when, who they were purchased from, if they're due. We make sure that, we had a couple of coaches request, oh, well, we want new varsity uniforms. We're going to give the old ones to JV. Well, no, the JV kids, they're up for new uniforms. I've got, you know, extra larges on JV kids, they deserve them. So, we're making sure it's a four- to five-year cycle, and actually, some of the new vendors that we started working with, we're looking at going with more of the uniforms that are, I'm going to forget the name of it, they're almost like fused in, so they never go out of style, they don't wash, the numbers don't fade. I'm drawing a blank on the name.
Not the dry fit?
Not, it's not really dry fit. It's almost where the numbers are, are right into, so it's not like this, it's fused, basically.
Moving into what?
Yeah, sublimated. Okay, there we go. Sublimated jerseys, so they don't lose the color, as well as if you have to replace a uniform, you can call them right away, and they can get a sublimated jersey. You're not saying, oh, it was a stock and we can't replace it. So, we've definitely looked at some different ways of making sure what we purchase is going to be used for the next five years.
Not from 1980?
No, not from 1980.
Another from Back to the Future with the short shorts. So, Melissa, when we look at some of these things, are we, as you're going to be getting into going into your pretty much first year of seeing the whole cycle, are we reevaluating so that the public would be able to realize that we are looking at what programs are viable? And obviously, we've made some combinations of teams where, you know, we were having problems filling them. So, obviously, that's something that you'll be looking at moving forward?
Yes. I'm a, the district I came from, it was a big thing that I looked at. We were actually one of the first schools to start the seven, eight, nine program. And it was because if you look at some teams, if you, just I'll throw one out, for example, if you take a soccer team, there's 11 kids that are supposed to be on the field. Some people will think, oh, well, I've got 13 kids, this is a great, healthy team. It's really not. That's not a healthy number team, especially when you have academic eligibility, you have injuries, you have sicknesses, and you really want to produce a healthy team. So, I look at more so as not the win-loss record, not just 13 kids, but do you have a healthy roster? And there may be a time that I have to talk to a coach and, and you as the board and say, look, you know, we're hanging on by a thread, we're just hanging on. I think it would be in our best interest, let's combine, create one larger team, because there's so many lessons that can be learned in that as well. And then after a couple of years, if it's successful, as far as the numbers now get too heavy, then we can look at, yes, yes. Because there's just, I've seen more teams fall across, across the area by just hanging on by that one or two kid, and it's not healthy for anybody, and it's not creating the lessons that an athletic program should.
The roster sizes on here, are they what we're going for? Because they're not accurate.
Okay.
Well, for that seven, eight, nine soccer team.
Okay.
Did not have 20 kids on it.
Okay.
Lucky if it had 13.
Okay. It was, so, according to our records, I think that was what ended up with in power school. Um, so, yes, so we, I don't think it was registration to try out. I think it was registration by the final count. I can definitely double-check on that. I can tell you there, I know that we had talked about soccer when I started, that I had to keep an eye on my boys soccer program on the one side of town, because the numbers were hurting already combined. We talked about that, and we talked about one other program, but this was based on our power school numbers, so I can double-check on that. Thank you.
Right, there was 13 boys. If we were lucky, we played, sometimes we played with 10.
And that's, that's part of the struggling. That's the things you don't want to happen. And there's, there's ways to fix that, especially, we are two districts, so, well.
On the same street.
Yes.
That's refreshing to hear.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, no, it is because it makes sense when you talk about what you're spending on a program.
It's also the.
Stressful on parents.
Yes.
And you cannot take a vacation, or you go away, or something happens.
And it's also the way, from the coach's standpoint, to produce a successful program in the long run. Like I said, it's very, if you're trying as a coach to teach about responsibility, and you have to earn playing time, or you have to do this, it's very hard when you only have 10 kids out there and everybody plays. So, those are things we're looking at. We're looking at a couple of other programs. The roster size from the spring, I believe, were the ones that registered. Obviously, the season did not finish, actually start for some of them.
So, when I see here site rentals, obviously, the hockey rink makes sense.
Yes.
The bowling alleys make sense to me. What, what are we renting football-wise?
So, that's a great question. That actually comes up. The football is the recon. If you look, it's a site rental and recon, that's reconditioning for football.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure. It just happened to be that it falls under the same budget code line.
Okay.
So, football is all reconditioning, which you guys all know it's mandated. Some of the other facilities, especially in the spring, we allow our teams to rent indoor facilities to practice and participate at.
Like basketball and stuff like that?
I'm sorry, what?
Basketball, it shows?
Yes. Basketball, when?
Lacrosse, all those?
Yeah. They, so some of them would be Salons, the indoor, Exjon Gym, BNCC, we use a lot, especially in the spring when there's no facilities to practice at.
And I see the site here for hockey.
Yes.
Forty, or that number there, that's obviously not for the ice time, right?
That was for the ice time divided by two, so if you take the two schools in Adam together.
So, was this last year's total?
That was last year's total.
So, that's different than what we're under right now, then?
Right.
That's the increase?
This is last year's total.
That's last year's total.
For both schools.
For both schools.
Okay, and the, the numbers that we just got from recently, from the town?
Yeah, they're, they're higher.
They're higher.
Oh, significantly higher.
Yeah, they just increased it a lot.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, they did. So, that, yeah, that's last year's of what we paid out to the town.
But did the season run?
The hockey season, yes. Complete.
Not modified, though, right?
We don't have modified. That's a club sport.
Got it. Okay, just fed.
Yes. So, it's just, we have varsity, boys, girls, uh, excuse me, varsity boys on the West Side, varsity boys on the East Side, and then varsity girls is a district team that's combined with two other districts.
So, there's three teams?
Yes.
Okay, my other quick question. On the East Side, you have seven, eight, nine modified soccer, and the West, you only have eight, seven, eight?
Yes. The numbers, this was before me, but the numbers, obviously, the, I think Mr. Dillo also looked at it and said, the numbers were struggling, let's combine the two. It's, it's, instead of running the JV program. So, it's one of those steps that you can take, and so, you have two option, well, we have two options, really. You could combine East and West modified to make one big modified team, but because West's numbers weren't struggling, I assume that he took the JV with these, yep.
Okay.
Not, not that soccer's the big thing to talk about here, but in knowing that, know that on that seven, eight, nine team, there were no nines.
Okay.
They did not come down to the middle school to play modified soccer.
Right.
It was seventh grade and two eighth graders.
Okay.
That's how that, so I don't know if that was necessarily.
A good thing.
We didn't end up with any nines.
Gotcha. It's always something, it's always interesting to look at, and it's interesting for me here because your middle school is not within your high school. So, a lot of the stuff that we were working on before COVID hit was how do we build our programs? I am, that is a big thing for me. Like I said, as far as there's a huge K5 push that I want to do within PE, as well as working with Stephanie Wright, of how we build programs, a lot of it happens after school, as well as on weekends. But then it is also getting the opportunity to get our coaches down at the modified level to recruit. One of the things we did this year, we were hoping to do this year for field hockey. Field hockey's a district team, but they were primarily set up at the West Side. So, what we've did this year is we were moving them all over. So, the varsity team was going to practice at the West Side, play their games on the East Side, but the JV team was going to go back and forth between locations, so that we just didn't have the East Side always coming over to the West Side, because I think we lost a lot of kids that way. So, we were really trying to, you know, help our coaches in that manner, but also, we were looking at setting up different ways of, whether it be a soccer night, or just getting the kids and the parents so that they knew what we were going to offer and what activities there were for them. and what activities there were for them. That was pre-COVID, that we're hoping, uh, once we get the go-ahead, then we can work on that again.
Can we talk?
Go ahead.
Be sure.
Yeah, go on.
Can we talk a little bit more about, you said there was a plan for PE remote?
Mm-hmm.
That's probably at the forefront and-
Yes.
What we should be speaking about versus-
That's okay.
So what is the plan for PE? It's a big concern.
It is a big concern. So I will tell you, last year, we were under, it, it was, it was hard last year. I think it was hard on everybody. Um, I think Kristin Farley had a great name for what happened to us and I can't remember what it was. Um, but it was very hard for PE and health in the spring, especially, um, just, uh, with everybody not having access to a Chromebook. It was just, it, it wasn't what we wanted. So in talking this year, we've set it up that elementary PE will basically follow their schedule. They have a three times a week. Uh, what they're going to do is they're going to be required to log in for a Google Classroom with their, uh, classroom at least one time a week. So if your child is a first grader and they were supposed to have PE on Tuesday at ten, they will be logging on to, uh, Mrs. Potter's, let's say, uh, Google Classroom and they will, whether it's one or whether it's twenty, they will do an activity with their classroom for those forty minutes. And it, it is going to follow. It's going to be pathways. It's going to be locomotor movements. It's going to be personal space. It's going to be whatever they can do, um, you know, can't assume everybody has a ball at home, but whatever we can do that way. So that's one time a week for a Google Classroom. They will have activities because we do understand that not every parent is going to be able to log on and help their first grader, second grader, third grader log on at ten AM. So they are going to also post activities, three to five activities each week. And those will be activities that parents will be able to and kids will be able to log in at any time. Some of them will be just a simple video that they could watch, um, some and participate with. Some of them will be an actual activity. They will have one, um, I say assignment, but for elementary, it's not, I don't want anybody to hear assignment and be like, oh, my gosh, they're giving. It could be tell me about your week. Tell me, you know, which activity did you like the best so that we can keep track of who's actually participating and we can make calls home. If for some reason we, for, um, two weeks, we haven't seen Johnny, we can make a call home or a call to the principal that says, you know, they haven't checked in for anything, what can we do? Middle school and high school will be following their schedules. So if they have, um, if they're supposed to have PE Block One, they are logging in, uh, with Ms. Spino and they are running that PE class. Now, I'm not going to tell you they're going to follow a sixty to eighty-minute PE class, but they are going to get their PE. They're going to have their activity for the day, um, and then they'll log on again and have the activity for the day with some assignments. High school, it's a little bit easier. If that makes sense.
No, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you very much.
So the, the teachers, uh, the PE and health teachers, they received, um, an email with those directions from me today. And then, like I said, we are meeting next Monday for an hour, uh, to an hour and a half. We're going to go over some ideas. I've already had, um, a couple of teachers send me some of their thoughts. So we're going to get it up there. We're going to make sure everybody understands how to use a Google Classroom and that they're ready to go and then take advantage of the professional development days that we have in September for that.
So I have one more question for you. I see on here we've making the arrangements to at least, um, combined, looks like with, um, some of the sports, buses riding together with JV and my-
Yeah.
Okay, so I see the ones that say C summer. What does that mean? Uh, if you look at, s- 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 ah, it says strength coach, it looks like, and track.
So strength coach was, uh, that was a coach that was supposed to be running in the summer.
Okay.
Um, which we did not run this summer. And track, C boys, they shared with the boys.
Okay. So games are set up, obviously, with the modified varsity there.
Yeah, so we, um, and I'm a, I've always been this way. If we can share buses, the transportation department here, uh, let me just say, they've been great. Um, they were extremely helpful even when we were trying to figure out our unified, um, transportation. But they, they said, you know what, you may have to pick up one school, drop off, then turn around. And those are, you know, to me, it's, it's great. We can absolutely do those. You should share. I've talked to other districts before that said they don't send boys with the girls team. We send boys and girls together. We are starting. Those are some of the changes that we're making.
I see that with, with West Boys for bowling.
Yes. Um, we're starting to make those changes. Again, if you're doing your due diligence and I'm doing my due diligence as far as teaching coaches how to manage that and behavior of kids on a bus, then you should be able to follow that.
We would literally travel to a modified soccer game, two buses in a row, full-size buses with twelve kids on each one.
Yes, yes.
Girls in one bus, boys in the other.
We've worked on that change as well.
And then nobody would take the bus home.
Yeah, that's, that's an ongoing, um, and again, that might be a conversation for a different time if there were areas that you were looking for, but that is, um, one, it's great because it means parents are attending contests, which is exactly what you want. Um, but there are ways with district approval that you could, um, do, um, a drop-off only. Um, those are some of the things that, uh, Mary Kay and I talked about and we were going to look at for this year. You don't set it up for the season. You set it up basically weekly of making sure that you have parents attending that game, um, and that all kids have a ride home, but you do a drop-off only. But, um, those are some of the other ways that we've looked at trying to save some money.
That's very insightful. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, concerns?
If, um, if we weren't in the COVID and some of these site rentals, please, we should be able to save some savings, um, within the field.
Yes, yes.
In the second field opening up.
The, the site rental is something new to me. Um, and again, if we were to have a different conversation about stuff, um, those would be an area that I would look into. The stadium at East, I can tell you right now, now you can't take a snowplow on the stadium, um, but there's ways of, and if you tell lacrosse kids to go run in snow, they'll do it. Um, so there's definitely ways of being out there, starting right away in March, um, and sharing of the field as well. Um, and I've already talked to East coaches, how you work out, sharing a field, baseball, softball, lacrosse, um, that aspect.
That would cut down on transportation costs too, right?
Correct. Some of the, uh, some of the site rentals, they do, um, because it's varsity a lot, they, um, have allowed the kids to transport themselves. So that, that might not tie in as much.
Do you have any liability for us on a different level?
I, I, I stepped into this one, um, because it was like seven o'clock rentals. Um, again, I've done waivers before and I've had our lawyers document, um, or draw up, uh, items to be signed. That's how I used to do it. Um, I just walked right into all that. It's not, site rentals are very new to me. Um, and transportation, I, it's not something, it was one of, um, my list of areas I wanted to work on.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marissa.
A lot of information.
Yes, yes, a lot of good information.
Very good information.
Get a better idea of what's going on in the, um, in the district.
Yes.
Okay, for our Director of Career and Technical Education, Dr. Robert McCall.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see all of you again. It's been a while. Well, some of you I saw last week, but, um, hi, good evening. So, uh, to answer some of the questions that were provided, um, what do I see as my job description? I oversee the five academies, Academy of Business and Finance, Academy of IT Digital Media, Engineering Academy, Academy of Visual Arts, and the Academy of Life Science. Um, I also oversee five departments, Business, Technology, Family and Consumer Science, Art and Music, um, oversee Career and Technical Education, obviously, Students of the Month, Students of Excellence, and the Work-Based Learning for the District, all the internships that we provide for the students. Um, my accomplishments for last year, my biggest accomplishment, I would say, is just building relationships with everybody. My job is a big job with a lot of different people. I work between the two high schools. I try to split my time fifty-fifty as much as possible so I can work with both populations of students, but I'm also working with the middle schools, elementary schools, and the businesses throughout the district. So, um, just getting to know everybody and, and building that relationship with, with everybody is, I would say, my biggest accomplishment because it's, it's not an easy task to get to know people. So I'm very, very proud of all the relationships that I've built and, uh, you create working relationships with people and they, they're here to help you and you can help them and it's, and it's great. So I, I would say first and foremost, that's definitely my biggest accomplishment of the year. Um, next, uh, getting the state approvals for, uh, reapprovals, first of all, for the Academy of Business and Finance, that one's done. We received a letter last week. Um, the reapproval letter for the, um, Academy of IT Digital Media, I have one more thing to clean up for that, so I anticipate getting that next week. Uh, but just to talk a little bit about that reapproval process, it's, it's quite a grueling process. You have to do a self-study, uh, with your internal team and then you get the external review team to review it. And trying to do that in the middle of everything that's been going on has, has been interesting. But it was, i- it's an awesome process because it gets me right in there with the curriculum and, you know, you start looking at the different finances. All right, we're paying for this software. Are we still using it? Do we need it? Is there something else? And it really gets you really deep into the program. So it's been a, been a great process. Um, for the first time this year, I've been working on getting the Engineering Academy as an approved program. Uh, that does a lot of things for our students and for us as a district. Now, with, with the state-approved programs for the, Every Student Succeeds Act, for the accountability measures on there, uh, the state-approved programs, the student can get a technical endorsement on their diploma for successful completion. We also get two points instead of one point for that student on our accountability measure. So that does quite a bit for us. So, um, our Engineering Academy, we, we're doing a lot of things that were very close. So I worked with the engineering folks and, um, we submitted that application back in June and there are some things to clean up on that, but I, I'm anticipating our students being eligible for that this year, which is a whole nother cohort of students that are eligible for that technical endorsement. Would, so that will increase our accountability score on that end. Uh, we are also sending quite a few more students to BOSI's this year and we get that same bump for, uh, most of those students get the technical endorsement as well. So we get that same two points for them. So with all of that combined, um, next year, our accountability score should, should be a bit higher and then two years from now, it should be quite a bit higher, once you get the full, uh, two cohorts through. Um, so those are well on their way. Um, and, uh, we had a hundred and twenty students graduate the academies last year, uh, which was quite a feat, trying to finish up internships and everything else, uh, in the middle of this. Luckily, many of the students had their internships done already, so, uh, you know, it was wrapping, wrapping up those final ones, but those are the ones that are hardest to get across the finish line. But we did. We didn't have, um, any students that did not finish because they, they were short on internship hours. So we, we did get them across the finish line. Um, we have a hundred and forty incoming academy students. We have almost four hundred students in the academies, uh, between the, the sophomores, juniors, and seniors. So it's, it's quite a large program, um, and it, it continues to thrive and do very, very well. Um, I've been working a lot with CARM, Persico, uh, to launch the Capstone Academy. We did put that on hold for this year with everything going on. Um, but we, we are still continuing to work on that to, to bring another opportunity to our middle school students.
Sorry, which one was that?
The Capstone Academy. Um, so it's, it's, uh, it's a program where the students, uh, basically try to find like, uh, a do-good project for the community or like solve a problem, something like that, and they get to, to work on it. It would be like an elective class for them, but it'd be a very cool experience for them. So we've been, uh, working through BOSI's. Uh, they have a consortium that, uh, we've been attending meetings with to get ideas. Some schools have it in place. Some unfortunately are mixing it for next year with everything going on and just needing to repurpose those staff. So we're going to put that on hold, uh, but continue to develop that. So when we do implement it next year, it'll, it'll be very good.
See, it's similar to the social studies, community service.
It is, yes.
That would be an expansion of it though.
Correct.
This is at the middle school? So it's a leadership service?
Yeah.
I, I think the social studies department does have something at, it's like an honor social studies class. Um, so this will be another option for them as well. Um, we did a hour of code at all of the elementary schools. We've done it in the past with only a couple of the elementary schools, but that was kind of my push this year was I want to do it for all of the kids to, you know, get them the exposure, get them hooked. I've been working a lot with Tori to see, um, how I can support him in his tech in a greater role and working with him, um, supporting him with academy students and things like that to try to, um, get them going a little bit more at the elementary level. So from March nineteenth to the present, what have you done differently from other years? Well, this is my first year, so not too much, but I have had to do quite a bit differently. Um, I'd say probably the largest thing is working with the art and music departments. Uh, those departments have kind of been run, run themselves. Uh, we've got some great district teacher leaders in those departments. Um, but with, with the change and everything going on, they needed a conduit to go between the, the district and building administrators to get back to them to figure out what was going on. Um, so my role greatly increased working with those folks. Um, you know, we have about, I think it's around twenty-five music teachers and about fifteen art teachers. So just working with them, um, we did, I did, uh, weekly Google meets with, with those departments. They were optional, but, you know, just if they had any questions, just to keep them going and, and keep them in the loop and, and make sure that that programming was still getting delivered, uh, throughout the spring. Um, trying to engage businesses in the virtual environment, you know, they're all cognizant that, that the internships are such a valuable part of the experience in the academy. So they've been trying to come up with ways to create virtual internships. It's, i- it's quite a lift. You know, businesses are struggling right now, so for them to try to take on something extra right now is, is challenging, but I've been really reaching out, you know, every couple of weeks and just trying to, you know, hey, can you give us a five-hour project? Hey, can you, you know, what can you do? What can we do for you? So it's, um, it's been good. It's starting to pick up more and more as people are starting to get back on their feet, get more comfortable. They're willing to, to do that extra task. Um, that being said, doing a hundred and fifty-hour internship virtually is a challenge too. So we've been working, um, we work with the Niagara Frontier Education Industry Coalition. We work with Junior Achievement. So those groups, um, NAF obviously, they're, uh, I attended the summer conference with NAF. They did it all virtually. So I did that with Renee Day and we got some ideas out of that. They're working on a lot of different things. So we've been, everybody's been working on it and I think everybody's starting to get to the point where, all right, we've got some stuff together and now we can start deploying it as we get back to school.
Can I ask a quick question? Do they all have to be paid internships or now because of this virtual?
So that's some of the flexibility that we got this year. Um, they don't necessarily all have to be paid. We're trying to not make that hugely known because it is nice for the kids to get paid.
Sorry. No, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, to at least get the students their opportunities if you can't, you know what I mean? At least, because I'd like them to be able to graduate on time.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're, we've been very flexible. And, um, in my communications, we just sent letters out, um, it was about a week or two ago to let students know where they're at. And we've been very flexible, even with businesses like, you know, NAF gave us that flexibility, but once you go there, then it's hard to come back. So, but, you know, the internship experience in and of itself, regardless of compensation, is so valuable.
Well, I think with your ties with NIFIC, that is very helpful.
Absolutely.
And I know that we, as a board, because I'm also on that board, we've been trying really hard to reach out to businesses, so hopefully, and he's very involved, by the way. Okay, so I give him a buck there.
Thank you. And Kelly, uh, Kelly Oldenburg, who's, who's been the executive director of NIFIC, she's been doing an outstanding job on going and, and, you know, really shoveling in and getting, digging up the dirt and finding these different opportunities and trying to get the, the different partners involved. So she's been doing a great job, um, with that.
I just have a quick question about music. What would you be doing different from what Nora does? She's a, you know-
So, so Nora's not nec- necessarily a district administrator, so she's not involved in a lot of our planning meetings and things like that. So I, I'm really, I've been the conduit to get her information.
Cause she does have a stipend this-
Correct, yes. And, and don't get me wrong, she earns every little bit of that stipend. She does a knockout job. So it's not like I'm taking over any of her role. It's just being that conduit for her to, you know, like when we, when we have the curriculum cabinet meetings, you know, if she needs anything, then she comes to me and I bring that to the curriculum cabinet. It, it's more of being that conduit, you know, and letting her know as plans evolved, once COVID-nineteen hit, you know, just keeping them, her and the, all the music teachers informed of what, what the expectations were, uh, what their, what the options were, you know, how often we should be working with kids, grading, all of that, all of those things that were evolving as the pandemic- What their, what the options were, you know, how often we should be working with kids, grading, all of that, all of those things that were evolving as the pandemic kept going. But yes, her and, and Kim Greenway, who's the district art coordinator, she, she does a wonderful job as well. All right. Next school year, how will my job be different? I mean, I don't think it'll be too terribly much different than this school year. Obviously, you know, a lot of virtual stuff, which, you know, we've had the time to learn. Now we've got it down pretty well. So it, you know, it's just gonna be, you know, just continuing to, to find different ways. I've been working a lot this summer, trying to identify the digital curriculums people are gonna be using. Make sure that they have the tools that they need to teach in a virtual environment, virtual textbooks, all of those type of things. Just to make sure we're ready to hit the ground running, running in a couple of weeks and ready to go. So I don't anticipate doing too many things differently next year. I don't like to change just for the sake of change. You know, when things make sense, then, then we'll change. But what obstacles do you have in your job? Time. Everybody, everybody faces the enemy of time, you know? And it's not just having enough hours in the day, but getting your hours to align with other people's hours. So you can sit down and have conversations and things like that. So. But you know, we're, we're keep, keep on moving in a positive direction all the time. The pandemic really hit the brakes on a lot of our positive momentum. So I'm looking forward to, you know, getting going on that. I missed my teachers over the summer. I missed the kids over the summer. You know, it's a lot of those things where you need them at the table. So just, I'm looking forward to, to getting that going. Cause it wasn't just, you know, the end of June that we haven't seen them. It's been since the middle of March, you know? So I'm really looking forward to, to getting that going again. What do you need from the district or Board of Education to perform your job more effectively? You know, like John said, just the continued support, open communication. I've had an opportunity to, to talk with most of you guys now. And I just appreciate the feedback. You know, if there's ever anything that you think, you know, Matt calls me and says, hey, the board was thinking about putting a, adding the paper for the academy graduates. Great idea. You know, any ideas, anything like that? Just continue to keep that open communication and, and continue to support it. You guys come to our functions and everything. I feel a tremendous amount of support from you and I really appreciate all of that support. So just, just continue with that. How will distance or remote learning impact your job this coming school, school year? The one challenge with virtual learning is it seems like everything, or anything virtual, it seems like it takes a little bit longer. You know, it's just more time. So it's a challenge. We're all facing it, but just getting things done. One thing I talked about with Jim Suhaqui, so Jim Suhaqui, he's on our advisory board for, he's our internship, our internship subcommittee president or whatever you want to call him. I forget what his exact title is. I apologize. But we were talking on the phone earlier about finding more ways to drum up some of these internships and finding new ones. Cause I've got my email list that I signed out, but there's a lot of, there's so many businesses in West Seneca that we haven't tapped into. That, that, you know, we can help them out just as much as they can help us out. So we've talked about, you know, possibly going door to door or you do, doing something like that. Just to get more people involved and, and to get, keep us moving in a positive direction. Questions?
I have, I do have a couple. How are our numbers, you said you have 400 students in academies. How are they broken down in the academies? Do you have enough numbers to sustain each one of the academies?
Yes.
Okay.
The, yes is the short answer. There, I keep a close eye and I watch the numbers year to year. When I did my presentation in January, I think I gave you the breakdown of exactly who was where. The short answer is yes. They're all, we like them to be right around 25. That's a great number. And most of them are, are right around there. So there's one that's maybe a little bit lower that we're working on, you know, trying, and that was part of the reapproval process. Hey, how can we make this better? Why aren't we getting kids attracted to it? So we're, we're keeping an eye on it. Putting a concerted effort with trying to get more enrollment in that particular one. But, but I mean, for the most part, they're all well-enrolled.
And that's why we wanted you to push down into the middle schools to encourage students. So they almost have an idea when they get to their freshman year. And my other question, do you have, looking at all, do you think in the future that you want to plant another academy? I mean, we talked about hotel restaurant management type of one, working with Niagara U. Do you have any plans on that? Or are we like on a?
I don't have any specific ones in mind. I, I do, like I look at the CTE numbers of the students that are going to BOSI's, for example. I just looked at those the other day of all the course requests and I said, you know, is there any program? Like there's one program where there's 10 students. I think it's criminal justice. There's 10 students that are going. And, and to be honest, I get a lot of like life science students that say, hey, you know, I really want criminal justice. Can I do my internship with criminal justice? So yes, we try to, you know, make that happen. So I'm constantly keeping an eye on that. But for 10 students, it's like, it's not there.
Correct.
You know, so, so it's, I keep, keep an eye on the, the enrollment in the current programs. Make sure it makes sense to keep running those ones. And keep an eye on other things like that to see, you know, doesn't it make sense to, to explore one of these other avenues? But to get back to that a little bit, so one, one of the big things that I forgot to mention about accomplishments for last year. So we were working on a career plan. It would be a K through 12 career plan. And I was working with Leah O'Malley, who is the elementary counselor and Tracy Spagnolo. Because that kind of falls under their auspices. That's one of the things that they have to do. That's a state mandate. But it also kind of directly correlates with what I do. So we had a couple of meetings and tried to put this, you know, try to get it together. So that everybody across the district is doing the same career plan. And this career plan follows them from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. Now we don't want expecting kindergarten. They're gonna know exactly what they do. But you know, they can do some exploration type of activities. So they start getting an awareness of, you know, hey, someday, you know, I'm, all this education is leading me to a career, hopefully. So that was one of the things that kind of came to a screeching halt with all this. So we're really looking forward to getting that going next year. We did look at a couple of online platforms. Last we left it, we were actually trying to work with BOSI's to build it into Power School. So it wasn't another platform. So that it was, you know, in something that we're already doing. The counselors, most of them are already meeting, not most of them, they all are already meeting with the kids. They're talking about this stuff. But this is, you know, having a platform to memorialize it and, you know, to keep referring back to. Because the career plan is supposed to be a living document, just like a resume. You know, you keep adding to it as they experience different things and get older. So looking forward to getting back to that.
I know you are. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. I got a couple of questions for you. I appreciate what you do. Really do. It's reinvigorating to see that our programs are going in a full steam head. What will our BOSI's programs look like going virtual when the idea was kind of going hands-on? How are we going to really make up for that until we get back into hands-on for BOSI's? And I seen that some BOSI's instructors have already reached out to students. So that's good that, you know, there was some connections made already. So maybe just give us a little bit of an idea of what you, what it's gonna look like?
So the BOSI students will actually go to BOSI's for their scheduled time.
Okay.
I've been getting some clarification. Cause with most districts, BOSI's is gonna follow their hybrid schedule. Cause most other districts are going hybrid. Since we're virtual, we don't necessarily have a schedule. So we've been discussing whatever our model would have looked like, might look like. They're, they're most likely gonna go two days a week. So they'll be live two days and then asynchronous for two days. So they won't get, they won't be there every day, which is what we want, but they'll still be getting that hands-on learning. You know, I, I talked to the principal over at Potter earlier this morning and, you know, they don't have some of the challenges we have. Like transportation, cafeteria, those type of things. And their workspaces are a lot bigger than ours. So they, they have a lot more capability to be able to, to do that. But they will still be going hopefully at least two days a week.
What about our, I, I took, go on that. Our PT program, are they gonna be going five days or two days?
The physical therapy?
No, the.
The PTEC program.
Oh, the PTEC, same thing.
Mechanics.
Sorry.
It's gonna be two days and then?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
They're gonna follow the schedule. I mean, actually, our virtual model gives us maximum, more flexibility than most districts. We're saying, listen, we'll send the kids to the maximum degree that you're offering the program. So I actually had a conversation with the program coordinator the other day as well. So we're saying, go to the maximum degree that they can.
Yeah, and I think with the workspace that they have in them buildings, it does make, they are set up for success because they are working in, you know, live environments. So are we supplying the transportation to each individual house that day?
It's gonna pick them up from their house and drop them back at their house.
Good, very good.
Which is, we don't typically offer that. Typically, they would come back to the building. So now we're taking them home.
And we're dropping them off?
Yeah.
Correct, yes sir.
Good. Obviously, that would be normally would be in school from school and that would be, but that's good. Okay, beautiful. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, well, it's great to see, you know, that you're actively in there and doing what you can for the students. That's always great.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
You too, sir.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one last thing on our agenda, our board goals. I sent something out and you also got something written. At, that we handed out at the beginning of the meeting. And do we want to, in each of the categories? We have academic achievement, social emotional wellness, district and community engagements, and resource management, which is the financial end. Do we want to approve some of these? Do we want to, these were suggestions by different board members. What do we want to do with our board goals? I'd like to get this done today. Cause last year, we got it done really late. Does anybody have, well, let's do academic achievement. Anybody wanna keep all of them? There's four on here. Do, and these will be on our website also after we approve them. Do we want to keep all of them? Do we want to focus on one or two of them? What do we think?
Diane, personally, I know it's a lot, but I think all four are very important. I don't know what the rest of the board wants to maybe cut.
Anyone have any other suggestions?
The second one's a little difficult because you're not holding workshops.
But you can do, there's virtual.
Well, we're, but we're, we're hoping year-wise and, and also for workshops and conferences, there's virtual ones. There's been some good webinars that, that I've attended, financial ones and employment ones this summer. And that have been very, very well presented. And, you know, they gave us a flavor, even though you, you could still ask questions and, and all of that. So, so we can still hope for the future for this.
And Diane, we're going to measure these, right? Over a course of, review them quarterly or?
Yes, yes. Or at least, at least biannually, yeah. Okay, any other questions on the academic achievement ones? We all set? Okay, for the social emotional wellness, which we, you know, is really important, especially now and with us being virtual, we have to be very cognizant. If the students are not interacting with each other, we have to make sure that their mental health is healthy. As well as the, the faculty's mental health. So any discussion on those?
Well, it says to provide necessary appropriate resources. What's that mean?
I would assume like the, the necessary teachers that, that are involved, different workshops. That teachers might go to, counselors might go to. I would assume it's something like that.
It's just a very general word.
Right.
Yes.
That's all. Resources.
Okay, so is there some way you want to change that or?
Well, no, I mean, it's, if you define it like that, I'm fine. I just, you know, appropriate resources, that could mean anything.
It's right, right.
It could be an email.
Give them a car, cause I'm not happy. I'm just saying, it's a resource.
Uh, you're not getting a car. Uh, but anyways, yeah, so, so we could, you know.
Is it like?
We define that or?
It, well, like teachers reaching out as a, because right now, we all know that the teachers are the first line
Right.
to notice any difficulties that can happen. And that's why when they were doing their Google classrooms, a lot of times teachers were trying to engage students to make sure everything was copacetic at home. And we know the increased numbers of emotional and physical abuses rising due to situations. But anyways, my other thing too is when they spoke, the administrators spoke about reaching out, the teachers reach out on three days. And then the administrators or the social worker on six days. That could be part of that, correct? Matt?
Sure. I think it's all part of a larger plan, you know, all pieces to the puzzle.
Yeah, just make sure the kids are constantly connected with our staff. Cause like you said, they're, they're the first line of connections.
I think both of them are important.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, for the district and community engagement. This is where we need to reach out to the community. And I'm sure we've all had phone calls that we've had recently. That, you know, people are concerned about what the district plan is and all that. And just to constantly engage with the different stakeholders in our community is, is very important. So is there anything there you want to take out or add or?
What about the alumni association? We do have the alumni.
It's at West, right?
Yeah.
West is, I don't think, I don't know if, does he?
Is he able?
I don't know, to be perfectly honest. I know through the sports boosters, they have alumni, but I don't know if they have alumni. I'm not sure. Maybe Matt, you can check on that.
I'm not familiar with East, yeah.
Yeah, I just know the sports.
Westers, yeah.
Okay.
When we discuss district and community engagements and what we need to do, I think one of the things we need to add that's really come to light in the last week before this came up, is the community understanding what the Board of Education is responsible for and what they're not. We need to put it out there, what our job is versus what everybody assumes our job is. So I would like to see that added as one of our.
Okay, so do we want to come up with some kind of a mission statement that we put on? Because we're, I know Peter is working on the revamping our website, our portion of the website. And do we just, you know, a statement there? Do we, how, how do you want that delivered?
Or even something just as simple as putting out there, this is what a Board of Education is responsible for. They're not responsible for all the other things.
We just approve.
Okay.
We have the handbook, like whether the phones work or not.
Yeah.
Why were the phones down today? If the phones were down today, there's no reason why I needed to know why the phones were, we didn't have students in our building. Otherwise, if the phones were down, there would have been a district call. But that was our fault, the phones were down today.
There's, there is some language, if you were looking to infuse something. I know like in, for instance, the board, you know, procedure manual also, NISBA has some language as well, if you, if you were looking for something.
So is the law book, you know, the.
Just to put it out to the, the greater.
Would you like to work on that statement?
I'll second that.
Yeah, Jody, you know, Jody.
All in favor.
Thanks guys.
Jody, you know what I think would be a great idea? You work on that statement and maybe possibly because we're virtual and we're taped, that Diane could read it or you could read it out in the beginning of a board meeting. And then eventually it'll get out as pub, as the public are viewing. And that would be another avenue versus, as well as the website.
Have you had the new board training yet?
The BOSI's training?
I think that's in September.
Erie County school books.
They'll help you with that. And also if you have a law book, it's all stated there.
I don't think it's, yeah, she's defining it.
I want to put it out there for everybody.
For everybody else, right, right.
I'm just saying, getting your statement together. That's, that's all.
Okay, so thank you very much for volunteering to do that.
So Jody, so we're going to, basically what's gonna happen here is you're gonna define what the role of the Board of Education is for the public.
Right, right. Yeah, it's not gonna be just, you know, technical stuff.
Because I, I saw some things that said, how is, how is the town gonna pay for the Chromebooks? So I think.
Did the town just say they're gonna pay for the Chromebooks?
I was hoping, I made a phone call.
Thank you so much.
So I think the more that we can get out there to explain and, and kind of really, I think it would help a little bit more in understanding what our role is and what was defined. And as we've always talked about who, who we, it's Matt, right?
Mm-hmm. Mm-huh. And, and maybe even put an article in the papers.
Yeah.
You know, once we get something together, you know, publicize it.
Be sure to include our salaries.
But yeah, also, I think maybe in that statement, it could be if, um, people have concerns, to email the board officers, so they're not, you know, going from each board member.
Well, I, I think as of elective officials, we are on the website, and I feel comfortable with my number there and my contact.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying it, but if someone contacts me, I will refer it to either Matt or Diane, or you, do you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think that's, we've practiced that procedure, to where we inform the chain of command.
But I think that it would be nice to also go out to the public to let them know that we're not, that we're refusing to answer those, but we have representatives to answer those concerns. I think that would be something.
And that we are one of seven, all of us.
Yeah. Make, make your little committee.
One of the ideas that we had for the website was to stop, go to the board, contact the board, and then that would go to you and copy us in, as opposed to picking out each individual member.
Okay.
Right.
And they could just email us questions or whatever, and, yes.
Yeah, they'll be on that one page you go to.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause right now, if someone sends an email to the entire board, I think they have to pick each email address, why not just email the board?
Board.
You can still have a separate kind of information, but if it's right at the top, contact the board. If someone's upset or has a question, how simple is it, contact the board, and then it goes to you, copies us in, you can decide, along with Matt and Larry, on the best answer, and we'll see it.
Okay, so Mr. Beadie and Mr. Grotowski are working on making our section of the Board of Education, um, on our website, a little more user-friendly. So you can ju, just very easy click on things and, and go right to the information, so.
We're just the idea people, that's, you know.
Yes, right. You, you need the idea before the tech guys can do what they do.
They're the real guys.
Yeah. Okay, so are we all set with the district and community engagement?
Uh, I have one thing.
Yes.
I hope that when we, um, decide to do some of these surveys, that we do have dates set, when we would like to have these done, how we'd like to have them done, and how we're gonna collect the data. If that is an outside source that we're gonna look at to do this, or are we gonna do it internally? When we get into some of these sensitive topics, that's what we're gonna have to talk about. I think there's a board on how we're gonna wanna achieve these surveys.
Okay, so, yeah, so I think what has to happen, once we get this, you know, finalized, as to what direction we're going in, then we need to set some timelines for each of the different ones, you know, when, when do we wanna do this, how are we gonna do this, and then get more specific into that. I'm, I'm assuming that's what, where this is gonna lead.
Right. That way, we can have the data and be able to.
Don't we already have, whether you call it an optics survey or not, a company or a program that does surveys, or something?
Use like Google Docs. Oh, I mean, we use like Google Docs typically if we wanna do a survey, or something like that. It just populates automatically, you can just aggregate the data.
I, I just, I thought I came across, well, I mean, one of our conventions, a company that already does this with us, that follows, again, this may not be the same way as the survey we're referred to, but it follows the students after they graduate, based on...
It's up to five years, wasn't there something?
Is that through Naviance?
I believe so, yeah. Do we, do we have that still?
We still have Naviance. Actually, Dr. Merkel was talking about trying to, some of the information, like, for instance, on student information, uh, like their, their career interests, we were looking to try to embed some of that into Power School, simply for the fact that it's a platform that everybody's comfortable with using. So, and it would follow the students, honestly, become part of the educational record, but it would follow the students throughout their academic career. So Naviance is not something that I can tell you that, like, for instance, in elementary school, they, they use. Not to say we couldn't, um, it's something we've purchased at the secondary level, it's used more heavily at the high schools than it is the middle schools. Um, believe it or not, it was actually a purchase that we made initially through our career, uh, I'm sorry, Family Consumer Sciences Department, uh, was using it to do like career interest inventories and things like that. So, I mean, we certainly have that, uh, that we could try to expand our use.
Program extend past graduation?
You know, we haven't tapped into that particular aspect of it. So, I know there was some discussion about it last year, but we talked about other ways that we could also get it, you know, engage, you know, where students are, you know, I guess, where are they now sort of things as well, so.
I just didn't know if that was, if that was something we already had, and consider using that, we're looking at.
We would be expanding our functionality, if, or our use of it, we certainly could, though. We absolutely could.
Cool.
Yeah.
And that, is that, is that adable too, through BOSI's?
Uh, yes, I believe it is, yeah. That's why, that's why we purchased it.
That's even better.
Yeah. It may still be an additional cost in terms of, you know, expanding our functionality, I don't know for sure. I do, I know, we had this conversation last year, probably, like mid-year, I feel like we really got into some, some good dialogue about this, and then things kinda got busy in other directions, but, yeah.
Yeah, I'm a big proponent of surveying after, so.
Sure.
Okay, if we end up seeing 90% of our kids didn't follow the career path they chose in high school, then, well, maybe there's a different way, you know. I'm not saying that's the case.
Yeah, oh, no.
There's always ways you can prove, improve, and that's why you do surveys.
Sure.
Okay, for resource management, uh, we'd like to get a little more involved with, um, you know, analyzing the budget, and especially this year and next year, it's going to be critical. Um, any discussion on, um, any of those, um, aspects?
I think they're all very important.
I think one through three are very similar, that, that can be put into one sentence.
Sentence, yeah.
And that one sentence is?
Well, I, I'll, I'm paying attention and writing it up as we speak, so.
Okay, okay, all right. So Mr. Grotowski will report when Ms. Pesch, Mrs. Peschia reports. Am I saying your name, Peschia?
Pecha.
Pecha.
Like Patch?
Pecha, okay, okay.
Pecha.
Gotcha. Um, okay.
We skipped the legislative thing, uh, and I think, you know, everybody is invited to those legislative meetings, if you'd like to go with me. I mean, you know, you don't need to necessarily be on the list, but it's really a good thing, a legislative committee. Those of you who, you know, sometimes can't, uh, because we do have a direct line. So anytime, we, we have a meeting in September, and anyone can go.
Yeah, I think I'm signed up to, to go to that.
It's, it's a BOSI's dirty, yeah. But, uh, it's a direct line. We get a little change in legislat, legislators lately, you know, you're running again, and, but we keep up with them.
Okay, great, great. It's always important, especially in this, uh, time period, to be connected with the legislators. So, uh, Mr. Grotowski, you're going to work on tightening up the language for one through three, and?
I've already got it.
Oh.
One sentence.
Go ahead.
Okay.
We're ready to write it.
Continued involvement in analyzing the budget from beginning to end, to uphold the mission and values of the school community.
That's good.
Okay, and you can email that to us?
Sure.
I'm tired of taking notes. Okay, um, so we have that done, um, and anything else for our board goals? And like I said, so the next step is to put some timelines, to put some, you know, when we want to do this by, and, and possibly how we wanna do it. So this is the first step in this process. Okay, any other questions, concerns about the board goals?
No.
Okay, great. Okay, um, we are going to go into executive session, and we're going to, I'd like a motion, um, to go in to move to executive session to discuss the medical and/or employment history of a particular person, and the possible appointment of a particular corporation or corporations, and to discuss collective bargaining with the district's employees' bargaining units. Can I have a motion to do that? Ms. Peschia, and can I, um, have a second?
I'm excited.
Mr. Grotowski, any discussion? Okay, um, a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried seven to zero. Uh, we will not be coming back after the executive session, 'cause we've completed the, um, the work session, and so everybody stay safe, have a good night, and, um, come to some of our forums that we're having for the parents. Good night.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.